...tonight. I've met some of you, I hope to meet the rest of you as we go along or at town meeting. My name is David Hurd, I'm the Town Moderator and in that position I'm responsible for running the town meeting. We've been running Town Meeting 101 for a few years now and we conceived it as a way to try to give new Town Meeting members a heads up and a preview of what Town Meeting is about. Many of you may have watched us on TV although there are other shows that might be more fun. Many of you may have come to the meetings because there was something that you were interested in that was coming before the Town Meeting. Now you're going to be coming to the meeting as an elected representative. And you're elected from your district and that's important, the folks in your district chose you to represent them and their interests at Town Meeting. My own feeling on this is that over the, I've been in Town Meeting since 1996, that people tend to vote their consciences and they vote what they think is best for the town as a whole, keeping in mind the districts and the neighborhoods they come from. So tonight, what we'd like to do is talk a little bit about how Town Meeting works. This is the first time we've done it in this room. It hasn't always been available for us and I was happy that we were able to schedule it for this room so you'll get some chance to see a little bit about the environment in which we operate. But keep in mind the dates that are important, you may have received a warrant in today's mail, I know I got my copy in the mail today, the warrant for the special Town Meeting which begins on Thursday, April 25. Normally Town Meeting runs Monday, Thursday, Monday, Thursday but because of some scheduling issues, the Town Meeting, the special Town Meeting is actually going to start on a Thursday. Hopefully that doesn't throw too many of the experienced members off, we're used to starting on Monday. And then if we don't finish on a session, we go to the next Monday or Thursday as the case may be. So we're having a special Town Meeting and then starting on May 13th, the second Monday of May, that's when we start the annual Town Meeting. Most years, we do the special and the annual together, we schedule them for the same date to start. And we get the special out of the way and then we go and do the annual. Tom McQuaid who's the Town Accountant, Chief Financial Officer for the Town will talk a little bit later about the differences and different topics that we take up, why we have the two Town Meetings often running at the same time or one after the other. So you know, when you come in here, the room will look a little bit different when we have Town Meeting. We usually have the sets of tables set up here. The Board of Selectmen sits off to my left, your right. In the center we have the Finance Commission and then a set of tables over here for different boards that will be speaking to the group at different times in the course of the meeting. The Planning Board will be there when zoning articles are being presented. The School Committee sits there when we take the school committee budget and sometimes other groups are there. So it will look a little bit different. I'll be up there at that podium and at a couple of tables put up there next to that podium, Mary Lou Follin, our Town Clerk, and Tom McQuaid will be seated. They are my right-hand people for Town Meeting. Mary Lou's job, she'll talk about that but she's the one who's keeping track of everything we're doing and Tom McQuaid is keeping track of everything we're spending and that's his job. The rules and procedure of Town Meeting, a lot of people have asked me over there as well, isn't it Robert's rules? It isn't. We have our own set of rules, it's in our bylaws that govern Town Meeting. And those rules as well as the statutes of commonwealth and the customs that we have dictate how we conduct the meeting. Mary Lou, all the Town Meeting members get a copy of the bylaws when they're, if you go to the Clerk's office, she'll talk about that. Already sent out or not, already sent out ahead of me. And you might want to review the bylaw that deals with the conduct of the representative Town Meeting. We start at 7:30, that's our posted time, or we start as soon thereafter as we get a quorum. Because we always have a lot of business to do, we hope to get everybody in their seats ready to go at 7:30 so we can start the business and get right to our work. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of prayer and then we go right into the warrant articles. Well actually, oftentimes there are announcements. Occasionally there are distinguished visitors, Congressman Lynch will occasionally appear and speak to Town Meeting to give a report on what's happening in Washington. There may be a few other announcements. Oftentimes the Finance Commission will have a presentation that sort of sets the table for what we're going to be talking about. And then we go into the different articles. Now each of you should have received in today's mail or will tomorrow the warrant. The warrant is the document that lays out formally and legally what it is the Town Meeting is going to take up. We cannot take up a topic that hasn't been set forth in the warrant. So if somebody comes up with a bright idea about doing something and it isn't within the scope of the articles that we are considering on the warrant, we cannot take it up. We don't vote on articles, we actually vote on motions that are related to the articles. The motions very often follow very closely the language of the articles as laid out in the warrant but sometimes they vary, sometimes they've been revised but as long as they are within the scope of what the warrant says, we will be considering, as long, in other words, that adequate notice has been given to the Town Meeting representatives and to the residents of the town, we can take up a motion even if it varies somewhat in language from what's in the warrant itself. There are motions that are made, usually if they're involving money matters, the motions will come from the FinCom. Certain other types of matters, the motion will come first from the Board of Selectmen. Sometimes individual Town Meeting members have put something on the warrant, or had something put on the warrant by petition or by vote of the Selectmen and they, those Town Meeting members who are bringing the matter before the body will have a motion. Any motions that are, well, I don't want to say any motions, but a motion that really deals with the matter that you're expecting the body to vote on should be in writing and must be signed, must be made by a Town Meeting member and seconded by a Town Meeting member. And I do have with me a Town Meeting blank forms of motions so that people can write them up if they've got something that they want to propose but you have to make sure it's signed by the person making the motion and signed by the seconder and I always say, do it and do it again if you can, so you have one copy in front of you to read from and I have one copy with me up on the stage to follow along with. If you want to speak at Town Meeting, raise your hand. I don't mean keep your hands up the whole time that somebody else is talking but when there's a break in the action, raise your hand and I go back and forth across the room calling on people. If you're called on, rise, first because when you're addressing the body, you shouldn't be standing but secondly, we have runners with microphones who sit in the back and come running down or head up to the area and back with the microphones for the people who are going to speak. So if you get up right away after you've been recognized by me, they can find you faster. Before you, when you begin to speak, you have to identify yourself by your name and the district that you represent. You don't need to give a street address. People who are not Town Meeting members give their street address but Town Meeting members identify John Smith, District 5. That's sufficient and then you say what you want to say. Technically, you're speaking to the moderator. If you have a question for somebody, it's through you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to ask if the Board of Selectmen can tell us the following things, whatever it is that's come up. We try to be very respectful of each other at Town Meeting. We don't tolerate people attacking each other. You may think that the previous speaker was the stupidest person in the world with what was proposed but you don't say that. You might get up and say you disagreed and you think there's another way to do it but we don't call people names, we don't cast dispersions on their intelligence or on their character. And we try to keep it polite. Everybody here is doing what they think is best for the town. And everybody here as Town Meeting members and the people at the front tables except for some of the paid staff, everybody else is a volunteer and everybody's entitled to respect and courtesy so we try and usually there's not a problem at all on that. Sometimes if you want to be sure that you get to speak on a matter that's important to you, you can contact me in advance either before we start the meeting, the evening of Town Meeting or by email to register to vote, I'm sorry, to register to speak on a particular matter. My email is moderator@knowitma.gov. And people can contact me about Town Meeting through that. And if you want to be sure to get to speak, registered speakers do get to speak. Sometimes people want to speak on a matter but they let a whole bunch of other speakers go and then somebody raises their hand before you get to speak and moves the question. When somebody moves the question, what they're doing is trying to end the debate, end the discussion. And if that motion is seconded and then carries on a two-thirds vote and moving the question is not debatable, it interrupts all discussion. You have to recognize to move the question but if somebody moves it and it's seconded, we proceed directly to a vote. If it gets a two-thirds vote, then that's the end of it and if you wanted, really wanted to speak on that topic, you've missed your opportunity. So that's why sometimes people want to register to vote, to speak on a matter because they want to be guaranteed to, that they have that opportunity. I will not allow somebody who is a registered speaker to move the question. I simply will not allow that, it wouldn't be fair. The other thing is you cannot give a speech and then end the speech with, "I moved the question." If you want to move the question, that's all you get up and say. So you can't get up and speak for, by the way, you have five minutes to speak, you don't have to take the full five minutes. Please don't. We need to get out of here by the Fourth of July, I think. But you know, there is a rule against giving a speech on something and then saying, "And therefore, Mr. Moderator, I moved the question." I'm not going to allow, I'm not going to recognize that motion, in that case it's against the rules.
David, just in addition, if someone registered to speak, they don't have to speak because some might have made their points and they were going to and they don't have to fill out the paperwork.
That's right. Sometimes somebody will have already said what you wanted to say and it's not a question of, you know, how many people say the same thing or how many people support something that's useful but David Hujar who's our newest Selectman is correct, just because you registered to speak, sometimes people come to me for me and say, "I know I registered to speak, I don't want to speak." Or sometimes when I call them, they say, "That's okay, I've got nothing to say about the matter right now." That's okay too. When we vote on things, most matters we vote on go by majority vote and generally a voice vote. Occasionally we have to count. Some votes require a two-thirds vote. If we were dealing with interests in real estate, selling land, buying land, something like that, that requires a two-thirds vote. Sometimes the vote is so overwhelming that I can call the vote, you know, there were five opposed and 100 in favor. That satisfies the two-thirds requirement. Sometimes we have to, I have to have tellers go out and count the vote so you're called upon to stand when we're calling for the ayes and the nays and they'll go around the room. You have to make sure you have your Town Meeting badge, Mary Lou Follin will talk about that, if you want to vote, count it. There are some votes that, there's one vote that requires a nine-tenths vote and that's if we're dealing with unpaid bills from a prior fiscal year. I don't think I've ever had to count that because they're usually unanimous. That's a hint, they're usually unanimous. We used to have a couple of people who voted as a matter of principle, voted against it so it was usually 100 to 2 but they're no longer members of Town Meeting because they passed on. So you know, Town Meeting, it's important to work what we do, we are the legislative body of the town. If you think of the way the federal government and the state government serve, there's the executive, the president or the governor, there's the legislative arm of government, the Congress or the state legislature. We are the legislature of the town. The Selectmen are the executive or the executive authority. They can't spend any money, nor can the schools, nor can anybody else spend money except that we first have appropriated. So that's, we have the control over the money that gets spent in this town. Town Meeting makes the bylaws of the town, the general bylaws and the zoning bylaws. Those are handled by the Town, by the Town Meeting. So there's a lot of important work to do and we meet until we finish. Our rules do say that we don't go beyond 10:30 at night unless in the moderator's opinion we can finish whatever's left on the warrant with a reasonable extension. So occasionally if we're getting close to the end of the warrant, we may go an extra 20 minutes or half hour. But if I think we're not going to finish tonight, then we end at 10:30 or as close to 10:30 as we can. You know, I don't like to stop in the middle of a discussion or anything like that if we can avoid it. So there's a certain amount of predictability to when we get out of here. There are some towns that go until 11, 12 o'clock at night, our rules are different and that's just how we operate. That's, those are sort of my comments, general comments, I think we're going to allow questions in a bit but I'd rather that we hold the questions until we get the other people who are going to speak to us up here. Mary Lou Follin who's our Town Clerk, she's the person that really gets this all done behind the scenes in terms of getting you folks, getting people through elections, getting you sworn in, getting you qualified as Town Meeting members and most, a lot of the mailings will come from her office to you. So Mary Lou will talk about that. Alan Slater who's Chair of the Finance Commission will talk about what his commission does, their responsibility. Alan is sort of the star of the show when we're doing the budget and all that, he's sitting in front. Paul Bishop who's a Chair of the Board of Selectmen will be speaking about the role of the Selectmen and Tom McQuaid will talk about municipal finance and some of the differences between the special and the annual and how that works. And then we'll take questions after that. So Mary Lou, thanks.
Hi, everybody. I hope you all received your packets as new Town Meeting members in the mail, they were sent out last week so I assume that hopefully everybody got them all. You had your yellow sheets of the Town Meeting bylaws, you got a copy of the Town bylaws, you got a copy of the Town Chatter and then you got your term letter, how long you were appointed for, elected for I should say, and you got your instructions on how to go and get your badge taken at the civic. And the other letter was about if anybody either moves out of district during the year or moves out of town during the year, that's also in your Town Meeting bylaws that you should notify our office just to know because if you want to move out of district during the year, you continue to serve in the district you were elected to until the next town election. But it's important that we do know that just to keep track of everybody so that, you know, we have to get everybody on the ballot for a vacancy for the next year or whatever. So hopefully, everybody did get their packets. When you come into Town Meeting, there'll be two tables set up outside of the lobby. The first table with my staff sitting at them, the first table is where you sign in. We have a check-out list that you sign in, you can just give your name and they'll check out your name. The second girl will have a pink attendance card that everybody has to sign because that's how we keep track of the quorum. So when you get your attendance card, you sign the card with the correct date next to your name and you give it to the policeman, there's a policeman at the door on the way into Town Meeting. So he'll take your attendance card and he checks you in. So and he'll know when we have a quorum so that we can let David know so we can get going as quick as possible. So the quorum is, this time it's 125 people, so we need at least 125 people. So it's good to get here, it's close to 7:30 if you can so we can get going and get started. And the other thing you will get out of the table is your badge. Hopefully everybody will get a chance to get their badge taken, their picture taken for their badges. If you don't get a chance to take it, don't worry, we do have badges that just say Town Meeting Member but it's good if everybody can at least get your badge, picture taken before the meetings. So we'll give you that at every meeting and at the end of every meeting, excuse me, you pass them, the boxes are all set up by district. So at the end of the meeting, you put the badges back in the boxes and we take them, we bring them to every meeting that we come to. I hope everybody will get someone in before, if you can't make it down in the office, come to my office, the Town Clerk's office, if you can't make it, we do have a swear and inception session at the beginning of Town Meeting before it starts. I know a lot of the people there have been on Town Meeting for a while, they just do it, you know, when we come, so the first night we will have swear and inception. Other than that, all the handouts that if they're, if anybody didn't send anything out in the mail, not everything comes around our office, like some of the school department, they might have some handouts or something. All these tables on the inner lobby and there, out there, that have all the handouts on it. And if it's anything new, we usually put a sign that says new handouts so people will be able to be sure to take everything. But most of the stuff that we give out, we mail out before Town Meeting starts. Like all warrants will always be mailed out to you. The yellow sheets which come from the General Manager's Office, they'll get mailed out. Those should be coming out probably next week sometime. So, but there is also a table out there that will help, a lot of different handouts, you know, people put different things out there. As far as any, anything as far as if someone's running for state office or anything like that, nothing can be signed inside the building, it has to be outside the building. Some people collect signatures, it has to be done outside the building, you know, there can't be, can't be a lot of, anything with, you know, if somebody's running for some office or something, want you to sign a nomination paper. Happens every once in a while, not a lot, but it has to be done outside the building. Can't, they can't be, and we tell them ahead of time because, you know, they'll know they have to. Other than that, I, that's as far as all I do, basically.
That's all you're going to do.
Sit up front and take notes and Tom's my guy, David's my guy, so this is kind of new for me too as well, sitting up front. Alright, that's it.
Just one point that Mary Lou mentioned about political activities. My rule and I have control of the venue of Town Meeting as moderator. My rule is that nobody can hand anything out or solicit signatures or anything like that any closer than the sidewalk that runs across the front of the school. So once you start into the sidewalk that leads into the building here, that's off limits for any political activity. We had occasions years ago, particularly when we met at the junior high, where people were running a gauntlet of people who were pushing for one issue or another. And as important as all these issues are, Town Meeting members are not, I'm not going to have them subjected to running a gauntlet or anything like that. So the political activity, and that includes people holding signs on override issues or anything else, they know and if they don't know, they're told by me because I stop out there a couple of times before the meeting starts, just outside. Once you get past that line out there, it's very non-political and it has to be. Where's nonpartisan? We all have very strong feelings about what we want for our town. We discuss them in here but we're not going to have signs and all that, it's just not allowed. Paul Bishop is our Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, he'll be elected as of last week and he's going to speak to us about the role of the Selectmen in a, in the Town Meeting. And, yes, the Town Meeting, that's, you signed the warrant. I like the handwriting on the warrant, by the way, Paul.
It's all about me.
I noticed David's was in blue.
If I could just take a little executive privilege and I want to thank you all for being involved. Town Meeting is the purest form of government. Yes, we have our school committees, we have our finance committees, we have the Board of Selectmen and so on and so on but you are really the hot soul of the operation, you are the people who make the final choices and the final decisions. You all have lives, you all have children, many of you have children to take care of, you have issues, you have your work. And I always am impressed by the people that step forward and get involved in Town Government. And this is, the only way it works is because of each and every one of you. So I want to personally thank you all for getting involved. Sometimes at night at quarter of 11, if we're staying late, it seems like, did I make the right choice? But you did make the right choice. But what I want you to do is think with a clear and open, pure mind. Take personalities out of everything. I want you to get as much paperwork as you can when you came in that door, get all the papers that are up there on various topics and discussions. Learn as much as you can, not only about your job but the issues that you're voting on. Make sure you have all the answers and you know exactly the way you want to vote. Education, 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 educate yourself as much as possible. Mary Lou talked about the bylaw book, some of you may or may not have. But Out of Chapter 34, those should be pages, I think 36 to 39, the rules and procedure for representative Town Meeting, that's what you want, you are a representative Town Meeting. And not to drag this off, but there are two forms of Town Meeting. Open Town Meeting where everybody in the town has a right to vote under a certificate or, you know, if they're a citizen in that town or whatever and registered voter. And the other one is representative, which we have, it's a much more subtle form of government. We don't have a madhouse of people here, 300, 400 people from the town, everybody raised their hand. This is much better. And every one of you represents a different district. Some of you in the same district. But again, be the best you can, take it serious, know the topic, get the information, study the information and make an informed decision. Okay, what do the Board of Selectmen do? We do a whole bunch of things but I'm going to restrict it to Town Meeting. One of the things we do is we're responsible to create that warrant. Now that warrant is the vessel that contains the articles. And maybe an article presented by the Planning Board, the Finance Commission or somebody else, a private citizen and we decide what goes on in that warrant and we vote it and we create that vessel. Then we, at some point in time, have meetings involving the warrant and decide what's going to go first, what's going to go second, so on and so on and so on. We try to make it as simplistic as possible. And then we vote on it and we have to sign the warrant. Once the warrant is signed, it's closed and once it's closed, the director goes to Town Meeting. Although it's a principle of the way we're run, but nothing is added after we sign it. We just, we just signed recently to close the warrant and we're going to move forward with Town Meeting. So what do we do when we get to Town Meeting? We sit over their head, we present certain motions and we have to defend those motions. We take questions and answers on the motions and we defend that warrant so to speak, if that's as possible. So everybody's got a role in Town Government whether it's, again, the various boards, but you are the people, you are the people. This is the Executive Board of Town Government, the highest regulated board in town but we're not the top of the top, you people are. You make the choices, you make the decisions and once you make those decisions, we're responsible, the various boards, to carry out your decisions, your choices. Does anybody have a question on anything? Okay, good. But again, learn as much as you can, know the topic, know the issues. And again, I thank you all for being involved because this is how good government works when good people get involved and make good choices, good decisions. Thank you.
Alan Slater is Chair of the Finance Commission this year. And Finance Commission is the body of the town, selective body that really does all the numbers. There are other groups that are involved in that but they're elected to then present it at Town Meeting. So anytime we have a money article, the FinCom makes the motion. So when we're doing the budget and all that, 90% of the motions are going to come from Alan. But he has some comments as well as some slides.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and that's how anyone who addresses David during Town Meeting is supposed to address him, is Mr. Moderator. Chairman of the FinCom, the FinCom, you know, plays a key role during Town Meeting. FinCom, you know, got the Selectmen, got budget balancing, got any of the other departments but the FinCom is a group that's solely responsible for preparing and presenting a budget. That's established in our Town Bylaws. We'll develop the annual Town Budget. We have to present a balanced budget, we cannot do deficit spending. You know, you have to ensure in a budget that your revenues match your expenses. Federal government can deficit spend, cities and towns and states cannot. When you get your budget book, you see an annual report by the Finance Commission. I'll usually also do a report at the beginning of the annual Town Meeting. I'll usually also do a report at the beginning of the annual town meeting. Basically, we refer to it as a state of the town address. And all financial motions, including a specific recommendation, will be made by the finance commission. Again, our annual town budget, it's revenue-based. It comes, it is four parts. The utilities, shared costs, which things such as insurance, retirement, debt service, general government costs, and the school department. You've heard about the budget balancing committee. It's not an official committee, it's referred to as an ad hoc committee. It's advisory only. It consists of members of the selectmen, finance commission, and the school, the school committee. And the purpose is to, you know, bring all the boards together, get some dialogue, hopefully it'll result in a much smoother budget process, where we will identify the total revenues for the town. We'll take out the utility costs and shared costs, utilities, I'm referring to the electric light department, broadband, and water and sewer. We'll propose the shares for a school in town, which we use as a base fifty-five forty-five, and they will make a recommendation on a budget to the finance commission. But as I said, the finance commission is under no obligation to accept what comes out of budget balancing. Usually we do, because we're part of budget balancing and we've reached an consensus, but it is the finance commission who does bear the responsibility in the end. Sources of funding, which goes in the budget. First is department receipts, those are things such as excise taxes, is, as examples, excise taxes, ambulance fees, building permits, a few other things. Utility receipts for the electric light, broadband, and water and sewer. State aid, which fortunately this year is up a little bit, other years it's been down, but we're fortunate this year. Proposition two and a half on tax levy, that's, which is the only increase in revenue that we can actually count on any year, because you never know what's going to happen in state aid. And, you know, the department receipts recently have been flat. And then surplus funds, such as free cash and a few other, a few other accounts. Our reserves, we refer, refer that term, you is, that's free cash. Those are the unexpendable balances from the previous year. Things such as recurring surplus, a couple of examples of that, the sale of cemetery plots, the added cost of your automatic water meters, those also go into the budget. You've also heard about the stabilization fund, which is really a savings account, referred to it as a rainy day fund. It's only to be used in certain circumstances for major capital expenses and for emergencies. Couple of years ago, we took three million dollars out of that to help pay down a portion of the debt service for the DPW building. Spending three million dollars for, right off the top, save significant money down the road in principal and interest. It is not to be used for the operating budget. It's certainly not good business practice to, to use your savings account to finance your operating budget, and as part of our, our town-wide financial policy. What we did take out, as I mentioned just a minute ago, the money out of the account to pay our proportion of the debt between, for the DPW building, there was an agreement with the selectmen and town meeting that over, I believe, seventy a period, we would repay money back into the stabilization account, to at least bring it back to where it was, and then to increase it afterwards. It should be, right now, based on what our town budget is, it should be at least six and a half million dollars. It's only about four point seven ton. And, you know, the, our accountants, and particularly the bond rating agencies have been on us to increase that, is one of the things that they look at when they rate a community, is their, their stabilization fund, in particular, and our reserves in general. And taking money out of stabilization requires a two, three vote. Motion, financial motions are made by the finance commission. Other motions, policy-related motions, many times are made by the board of selectmen. Planning board will make motions related to zoning. If an individual citizen has a, has their own particular motion, that individual will give that motion. The contents of a motion, I guess, go pretty quickly, will identify what it is, you know, whether it's a particular item such as a piece of equipment, or maybe a budget item, what your amount is, the funding source. Depending on the funding source, that determines how many votes you need. If it's an item such as taxation, that's a simple majority. If you're going to borrow or transfer a property, that requires a two-thirds vote. And as David mentioned, it's nine tenths for unpaid bills. A motion can be amended on the floor. I think that David and Mary Lou have talked about that. But if you amend a motion and you're requesting additional money, you have to identify the funding source. You can't say hypothetically, for, for the recreation department budget, you know, we'd like to appropriate ten million dollars to build a new indoor swimming pool. Great idea. But you have, but you have to say where the money can come from. And Mr. Employee keeps a writing total of available funds. If you want to use, let's say, taxation, you can get up and say, no, there's no taxation money available, you know, you have to come up with a different funding source. And the term indemnification postponement, the idea being used many times by, by board giving the motion, essentially that means we disagree with that motion. Our recommendation is that you vote that motion down. So let me give you an example of a budget item. This will be in your, you see your budget books, which you should be getting around the end of the month, Tom.
April twenty-fifth.
April twenty-fifth. This is information technology. The only reason I use information technology is that it has all I want to talk about on one page, and it's very special. So when I give, when I make a motion, I'll make a motion to finance, the, the information technology department, I'll identify the funding source, likely taxation, and I'll say, you know, we appropriate, we recommend you appropriate from taxation. Oops, whatever. Thank you. I recommend that we appropriate nine hundred ninety-three thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars for information technology. So what that means, and assuming, assuming it's approved by town meeting, is that all that can be spent on the information technology department during the upcoming fiscal year is this amount, the nine hundred ninety-three thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars. But what you're also approving is not only that bottom line, but you're also approving certain categories. There's a salary category, an operating expense category, and a capital expense category. So included in that nine ninety-three, you're approving three hundred thirty, three hundred thirty, three hundred sixty-three thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars in salaries, five hundred seventy-seven, four hundred eighty-seven dollars worth of operating expenses, and then capital expenses, fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars. So what this means is that for salaries, they can't spend more than three hundred sixty-three thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars. To do that, you, there are a couple mechanisms, but the most common mechanism is to get additional money at, at, at an upcoming town meeting, usually a special. I mean, it is an example, if you have, if you've only spent hypothetically three hundred fifty thousand dollars in salary, you're saying, oh, here's thirteen thousand dollars available, let me spend it somewhere else in the budget. You can't do that. You're limited to, you're limited to that specific category. So, and I know it threw a lot at, a lot up to you, you know, don't worry, you get it, we all do. We're always here to answer questions. So with that, thank you.
Tom McQuaid is our chief financial officer, is going to speak a little bit about his role in this, and the difference between special and annual town meeting, some of the different topics we take up. Tom has, I think, perhaps a really unique perspective. He was on the finance commission years ago. He was on the board of selectmen. He has been the town clerk, and then when we separated the position of town clerk and town accountant, so two different people would have it, he remained as the town accountant, Mary Lou became town clerk. And he's now, what is your, your full title, is chief financial officer?
Director of finance and accounting. Chief financial officer.
And so he oversees much of this, and works very closely, you're clerk of the finance commission, or?
Yes, so I, I assist the finance commission.
So he's intimately involved in all this, he's going to talk to us about that. Thanks, Tom.
So, welcome, thank you all for coming. So, you know, the main thing I want to explain is the difference between a special town meeting and an annual town meeting. So, the, the town, in, in our personal life, we, we tend to work on a calendar year basis, you know, we look at what's ahead in the calendar year. In the town spaces, as many nonprofit corporations work, we, we work on a fiscal year. And that's not physical, that's fiscal, F-I-S-C-A-L. And so we start our year July first. But when we're starting to prepare the budget, we have to be thinking about it long before July first. So we actually send, I sent out a notice to department heads in October explaining that they need to submit their budget. So that takes them, usually through December to do that. Then I accumulate all the information, and then in January, the budget balancing committee meets. I explain what we expect to have in revenue, and what we have obligations to already pay before any money's available for the general government or the schools. For a long time, we, we, whatever was available between the two was split out, fifty percent to the schools, fifty percent to the town. There's a famous story, where the town accountant got up and went to the bathroom, and the general manager changed it to fifty-five forty-five, so, because the school at that time needed more money. So, so it's, it did kind of switch overnight at one point in time, when, when finances were easier times, and, but was, was kind of held at fifty-five forty-five for a long time now. Now, you know, we, as people know, we, we are talking about the potential of an override. If the override does not pass, we're probably going to stick to that fifty-five forty-five thing going forward. But as most people know, in the override money request, approximately four point seven million dollars is designated for the schools and balance, which totals between the two and the five million, nine fifty. The balance is five hundred thousand, it's basically two fifty in new roads and three hundred thousand in snow and ice. And then there's a seven hundred thousand dollar part that's kind of like a share thing, so it's money we put in the bank to help the override extend. So you can see that if the voters vote to move ahead with the override, they're saying, hey, we want the schools to have this much more money every year as a starting point. I haven't done the calculation, but the, the new formula going forward would probably be something like fifty-seven and a half percent, versus the other. So, so that's, it's an arbitrary number, but it's one that's, that's worked over time. So that's the expectation if the override passes. So the difference between a special town meeting and the annual town meeting is, special town meeting deals with the year we're in right now. So April twenty-fifth, we're going to start the special town meeting. The big difference between governing the schools and governing general government is the flexibility, that the schools have more flexibility than general government. So when we, we vote on the school budget at the annual meeting, they're going to have a total of approximately forty-six million dollars. So the school committee during the year could, not that they would ever do this, but they could, they could take a line that said twenty million dollars worth of salaries, and they could buy twenty million dollars worth of books. So we, we, we vote a bottom line. During the year, they can take votes and move that money around. On general government, we're restricted to those three lines that Alan just pointed out. Salaries within your department, operating expenses, or capital. So if for some reason, something came up during the year, my office and the accounting office, we probably have twenty thousand dollars in operating expenses. So if we really needed to spend twenty-five thousand dollars, we have one option during the year. We can go to the finance commission. They have a fund called the reserve fund, so it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in there. And either the schools or any department in general government, during the year, if something came up that was unexpected, they could go make a requisition to, to the finance commission. Then I would appear before them, explain what my need is, and then they would vote, yes, transfer five thousand dollars into Tom's fund, or no. So if you look at the history, you know, after the fact, if you look at the history, when you look at the budget for the finance commission, oftentimes it says zero in, in actual per year, and zero in actual year. That's, that's because their hundred twenty-five thousand never gets spent by the finance commission. So they either transfer it out, or it goes back at the free cash at the end of the year. So if you look at the history, it, it looks a little strange, but, so that's our only option during the year, is general government. The second option is to wait for a special town meeting. So traditionally, we often have them in the fall, we have one. This past fall, we did not have one. So, so, so for us, operating since July, if we didn't get approved on the finance commission, we did, it wasn't a very memorable, I guess we did.
Yeah.
For one night. So if, but if something doesn't get approved by the, by the reserve fund, then we have to come back at a special. So that's what we're doing, is seven or eight articles that we're asking for more money. So you'll see one for the department of public works that needs more money for overtime, and I forget the reasons that they have, they'll have that in what they call a yellow sheet, they'll explain what they needed for. But in that, their case, they're taking money from their salary line, and they're moving it to their overtime line, which last year we had different categories than this year. We're switching our accounting system as well. But, so they're asking to move money within their own department. So they're not asking town meeting to give them more money, just to let them spend over one category unless enough. And then you'll see another article in there for snow and ice. So we kind of do a moderate level of budgeting for snow and ice every year. In the case of this year, I think for general government, it's five hundred thousand dollars, and we went over that by twenty thousand dollars this year. Snow and ice is the only category we can overspend, and that's because it's, it's a snow, public safety emergency, so. But even if we overspend it, we then have to have town meeting funded. So if you don't have town meeting funded, then it has to come against next year's budget. So, so this year on the warrant, you'll see that the schools overspent a hundred and forty thousand dollars on snow and ice, and the town twenty thousand dollars, and the airport, a little less than four thousand dollars. And the schools didn't spend that much more money in relation to the town, but that they're over by one forty, but their budget was so tight last year, the school committee voted to have a budget of, I think, twenty thousand dollars for snow and ice, kind of knowing that they could come back to town meeting if they hadn't spent it up more than that, so. So that's what's going to happen there. And then the third way that we, as general government, can get some relief is if the, the reserve fund transfer doesn't happen, and town meeting doesn't happen, because we don't know about it at the time. In the last two months of the fiscal year, we can utilize a municipal relief act, which basically said if the town manager and the finance commission agree, then we can move money between my department and DPW, et cetera. So again, we're not asking the town for more money, but we're asking for some relief money. So, again, we're not asking Tom for more money, but we're asking for some relief money. That's generally it. If you really, if you die to learn more about municipal finance, Tony Mizuko, the Town Manager, is doing a, he does an hour and a half seminar on town finances and I think he calls it Municipal Finance 101. I don't happen to know that date, but.
May 3rd, 2019.
What is it?
May 3rd, 2019.
May 3rd, 2019, according to the city. So, but anyway, look for that in the newspaper. It's actually quite interesting.
Yeah.
I've always been.
Base six.
Base six, thanks for the moderation. I'm always embarrassed to say that my 34-year-old Town Manager probably knows more about municipal finance than I do. But it's kind of amazing what he knows at such a young age, but. So, budget book. So, we're, actually Sue Bartlett is running the IT tonight and I have been working on finalizing a draft of the Finance Commission. So, they're going to get their draft of the budget book tomorrow. And then in another week, when they're done with their review, I'll make any last minute changes. And then I'm going to send it to the printer for publishing. Our plan this year is to have it available April 25th, which is the first night of the special town meeting. So, all the information in that book will be related to the May 13th town meeting. So, you'll be getting it approximately three weeks in advance of when you're actually going to be discussing it. But getting it early obviously helps you have more time to have it, but it also saves the town about $7.50 for each one in postage to mail it out. So, a little due purpose. Three years ago, we started putting the budget online. So, if you really want to get a head start, you can look at last year's numbers that are still online. I'm hesitant to post a draft that they're going to see because, you know, some numbers don't tie out yet. I don't want people calling up, oh, there's a problem. Yeah, because it's not done yet. So, but we will be posting it online and many people put it on their iPads or tablet computers. Some people don't even bother getting the manual book. And then in addition to the manual book that we will have available here, we printed about 1,000 copies of a reduced budget and that is available at 12 locations around town, including the library and various stores.
Excellent. Okay. So, when you come to the special on the 25th, don't go home without your budget book, please. Save the postage and save the town employees from having to lug them back to Town Hall. Mary Lou wants you to take everything home with you. All right. Thanks. I want to acknowledge some other people who are here tonight, not as speakers, but because they're interested. I mentioned David Ajar. Ann Haley is a member of the Finance Commission and has been for a number of years very involved in budget matters. Bill Plasko, longtime member of the Board of Selectmen, also was moderator many years ago, when you were about six years old, Bill, right? I think.
Almost seven.
Yeah. And Donna Montgomery is here. She told me she was here because even though she's been a town meeting member for a number of years, she wanted to do it all over again. So, sometimes we have the average town meeting member here to talk about it. Donna, is there anything you've left out as a town, you know, from the point of view of somebody sitting in the seats out there?
I think if you could explain about the school budget and how they, they move the money around.
Yeah, Tom mentioned that.
Is it state law?
Yeah, the schools, because of state, the state law, which governs all of us really, we can only vote, even though you'll see pages upon pages of information about the school budget, how much is going into textbooks or computers or salaries or whatever, we are only voting on the bottom line. You can ask questions about all those things and people will. And the school department and school committee will have a presentation and talk about what they are planning for the coming fiscal year. But ultimately, we are voting the bottom line for their budget. We can amend that bottom line, but we cannot amend all the lines above the bottom line. We can't tell them we want, you know, we vote that you spend $10,000 more on textbooks. We don't have that authority. We vote the bottom line and then in the course of the year, they have complete freedom to move that money around on school matters within their budget. Whereas as Tom and Alan mentioned, within general government, there isn't the same freedom to move dollars around from this department to that department or this type of expenditure to another one. You know, as Alan said, in the salaries department, that section of a particular budget, you cannot turn around and go and say, we're going to use it for operating expenses unless you get the approvals. The departments can't do it themselves. You're getting up because you're tired of sitting or because?
Well, I just want to point out, even though both of us said they can move money around any way they want, 80% of their money is going to its salaries, right? So, and they have contracts. They have, you know, individual contracts with administrators, they have union contracts. So, 80% of the money they really, you know, realistically cannot move around. And then, you know, they have other commitments that use up, you know, they're not going to eliminate custodians because they, you know, they know. So, you know, they move things during the year, but it's not, it's not like, you know, we're making it sound like, oh, they move money around any time they want.
But the point is, we cannot tell them how to spend the money. We give them the money. We vote the money. It's up to them to spend it in the way that the school committee with the help of the administration decides is best.
So, I'll just give you one example. Like, I've heard a lot, you know, obviously a lot of talk about an override. You know, some people think it's good, some people think that we don't need it. And I've heard some people say, oh, well, you know, if the override doesn't pass, the school committee will figure out a way to have sports, have fine arts, all of that. Well, yeah, they could have fine arts, et cetera, but where do they have to get the money? They have to get it from their pool. So, they would have to lay off teachers and, you know, or some other way. So, it's not like, there's, there's no other pool of money, once town meeting votes, that the school committee can access. So, even if we had four and a half, which we do, $4.8 million in stabilization fund, Tom Meeting's over, they can't access that money just any more than what Tom can.
Question? Yeah, clear.
What's the bottom line of the budget for the town?
Total?
I'm sorry?
The total, the total amount of money?
$192 million.
And how much should we still go for the high school?
Not sure I know the answer to that question, but I know we're, the debt service on the high school is $1,844. That's going down every year. But I couldn't tell you. I think we probably have 20-year bond.
Yeah, I mean, when we did, you know, you know, a few years ago, we took out like a 22 or 25-year old, a 25-year bond.
For seven years, seven years in.
Yeah. So, probably between 50 and 20 is left.
So, how much do we think that's like that?
Utilities is, does most of the variety. We have an $18 million debt service, of which $3.6 million is related to the schools and general government on your regular tax dollar. The high school one, which is, which is $1,844 of debt service is a debt exclusion that the town voted to voluntarily pay more taxes. The difference between a debt exclusion like the high school did is as their debt service goes down, the amount that we collect from you as taxpayers goes down a dollar per car or so.
I thought you know more. How much was that? What was the bottom?
Sixty, it was $68 million for the high school. The state, through the mass school business, MSBA, they contributed 55% of that money. So, I think ours was $28 million, our portion, which came to about an average of $100 a half month.
And the town balance is?
$1,844. Three years ago, we were paying $2 million a year. So, it's dropping over time, the amount. Because we, unlike your home mortgage, the town when we borrow, we pay our principal the same way. So, on a home mortgage, you would, you would pay, you would basically say, I owe $300,000 and 10% interest. So, that's $30,000 a year I'm paying in interest. And then my total payment is 35,000, so I'm paying 5,000 in principal. And then the next one, your interest is lower and your principal goes up a little. So, at a house, your principal always goes up. But on the town, we pay, let's say, 500,000 a year on the principal. So, that goes down a lot quicker on a town payment so that your, your, your actual payment every month, it's on a yearly basis with the town, your payment actually goes down over time.
These are, let me say this. These are questions you should go to Municipal Finance 101.
101?
That's, that's what this is for. I mean, this is for town meeting. In other words, procedure, what you do, what the, what the types of issues are to come up. Those are the questions, but I think Tony Mizuko would love to answer those questions for you with Municipal Finance 101. And, you know, rather than, and some of these questions will come up at town meeting, at the actual town meeting. And that information, well, now you know that Alan and Tom, those questions might be there at town meetings. You'll have specific answers.
But the difference between a debt exclusion like the high school is that goes down over time and it goes away. And override is a permanent commitment to raise taxes by that two, excuse me, by whatever the percent is. And then after that point, years on, it goes up no more than 2.5%.
Other questions? Yes, sir.
Hi, Andrew, District 7.
Very good.
District versus precinct. Does it matter which term we're using?
No, we go, well, we elect people from districts.
Oh.
People sometimes use the term precinct, but they refer to it as district.
You like precinct, move the devil.
The second question was, are there any formal procedures or customs around how constituents from our district may interact with us?
No. Town meeting members are free of many of the restraints that affect other town officials. I don't think we're covered, the town meeting members are covered by the Conflict of Interest Law or the Open Meeting Law. You can go off and talk to all kinds of people. And by the way, what was that bill?
Or Ethics.
Or the Ethics Law. I'm not recommending that you act in an unethical way, but I guess you could. We can't. I'm an at-large member of town meeting, but because I'm elected by the entire town, I stand, I'm governed by the Ethics Laws and the Conflict of Interest and campaign finance and all that. But town meeting members are not. So, you know, your constituents have questions for you, or you want to talk to people, you're free to do that. No real constraints. And by the way, anybody can speak at town meeting. You don't have to be an elected town meeting member to speak at town meeting. Our bylaw says any registered voter of the town. I have never asked somebody if they're a registered voter. And there are plenty of people who are not elected town meeting members who want to be heard at town meeting and they will raise their hands. By the way, in terms of the fiscal layout here, I mentioned the tables in front and who's up on the stage. The town meeting members sit in these front sections. And then, except over this side, over here, my left, your right, a lot of that section has town officials and department heads sitting in there. Some of them are town meeting members themselves. And Town Council sits down front. The Assistant Town Manager sits with the Selectmen and the Town Manager sits with the Selectmen. Some town meeting members like sitting way up in the back, although I will tell you that you are not as visible when you're up there because of the lighting in this room. And also the lights that come down here kind of affect our view out. There's a bank of lights here that will be on. So, if you really want to be seen, sit in these front areas, the center area, that area, or the, this side of that left-hand area. You can sit in the back. Visitors, non-town meeting members, sit in the back section. So, there's a mix in that section of some town meeting members who like to be up there and non-town meeting members. But other, no non-town meeting member should be seated down here unless they happen to be a department head, a town officer, or some people are sitting down the front, the first couple of rows, if they're going to be speaking to the body as part of presenting a particular matter. So, by and large, you're all going to be here. And people sit where they want, although some people tend to want to use the same seat every time. And then they, then they fool me when they move to a different location. And part of the way my mind processes names and I try to remember people's names is like, oh, okay, so-and-so sits, tends to sit there. And then they throw me off when they move to another section. I do my best to learn people's names. I'll apologize in advance if I call you by the wrong name. Please correct me. And usually I get it on the second try, but I do try to learn the members' names as they get up to speak and become involved. So, you can say what you want, you can talk to whomever you wish, and that's perfectly fine. Any other questions? Yeah?
Frank Adams, District 9. I was, today I received a schedule of meetings, some of which were for next week. Is that typical or is there usually more notice on that?
No, the number of meetings is not typical. Period.
What was your question?
The, there are a lot of meetings that particularly Town Managers are scheduled to try to get information out. Those are informational meetings, not really for discussion, not for debate, because the debate happens and the discussion happens at town meeting, but trying to get information out to people as much as possible. So, there isn't a lot of notice on those and it's sort of a first time doing some of this stuff. I think you did Municipal Finance 101 last year. And we've done Town Meeting 101 for a number of years. It's earlier this year than normal, I think, because we're having a special a few weeks earlier than normal. But if you can make those, that's great. It's not required, you know. Attendance is not really required anyway, but you really should be here at town meeting if you're elected. Yes, sir?
Just wondering, who sent you those? I've heard about them, but I haven't gotten anything official or like seen, or I didn't know if you guys were going to share about those informational meetings, like when they're going to be.
There was, I got a mailing today.
Oh, maybe I did.
That had, in a separate envelope, the discussion about the budget presentations, override information sessions, which are not part of town meeting, and town meeting information sessions, which includes tonight, which actually had it in the other room.
Okay.
There was an error when that notice was put together by the manager's office. But there are a whole bunch of meetings and you should have received that. I know I got mine in the mail today. And when I get it, it's also being mailed to all the town meeting members. Okay? What? Yeah, did everybody get the warrant in the mail? Have you looked at your mail yet?
Yeah.
Because I got mine, when I got home tonight, it was there in the mail. And this notice was in a separate envelope. And you'll get other mailings as we go through. The VINcon will have updates. The clerk's office notifies you by mail when we have adjourned from one night to another. Yep.
Isn't the Town Meeting 101, isn't there being a hybrid?
No, that was known 101. That's entirely separate. This is Town Meeting 101. Separate thing. Yeah, there are a ton of meetings and stuff to keep track of.
Just so you know, I'm not with 101's sponsor by the library and it's really geared towards people who have moved in town in the last year or two. And then you can come meet with your police chief and the IT chief and the head of the DPW and ask them questions. So, that's what that's kind of geared towards.
Yeah, nothing to do with town meeting.
They just had that last week.
Yeah. Any other questions? Yeah?
You may ask.
Charlie, how are you?
Good, thank you. After six hours. On a special town meeting on the 25th, will it go later and put it into Monday?
It goes to Monday. So, we go Monday, Thursday, or in this case, Thursday, Monday.
Right.
If it went beyond that, it would go to the next Thursday. So, some towns do it night after night. We do it Monday, Thursday, and that's in our bylaw. Okay? So, plan your schedule with DVR, set the DVR and all that. Yeah?
Amanda Adams, District 5. Just curious.
Just curious, what's the record for number of consecutive nights, only just so that I can block them off in my calendar, like, should I typically have three nights planned?
I think we went five a couple of years ago, but, but that was when we were doing special and annual together, because we, most years, we do, we, we, it's, we open, we call the special, A special and the annual for the same night, one at 7:30, one at 7:35. We, and, and it's, I'm like spinning up here, because we're opening one, adjourning it until, we open the annual, adjourn it to the close of the special, open the special and start up with all that. We've separated them this year, there were some reasons. We didn't want everything to be bunched up to the end of May when there's an election on June 3rd. We didn't want to have it all, have a problem with the schedule being too tight or running over, so the, the special was advanced. Normally, they're both held in May at the same time, and I think the longest we had for the, for the two together was five nights. We try to avoid that. It depends on the topics, and the topics, there are some very interesting zoning articles that are in the special that may take some time, and, and sometimes we find that issues that we don't think will take a lot of time do take a lot of time, and occasionally there are issues we thought would take a lot of time get taken care of in five minutes. So, it's, it's unpredictable sometimes how long things will take, how many people will speak, how contentious the discussion will be, how close the votes will be. But we do our, we do the business, we do it until we're finished, and when we finish, you'll hear a motion to dissolve. The motion to dissolve is the motion, and by that time, people are putting their coats on and trying to get out of their seats and get out of here, and we still have to vote on it. Motion to dissolve ends the town meeting, and once we dissolve, we can't come back and say, "Oh, we forgot to do something, we got to do this." We'd have to call an entirely new town meeting, but otherwise, we just adjourn from day to day until we're finished, Monday to Thursday to Monday to Thursday, et cetera, until we get everything done. I don't know how long this special will take, I'm thinking a couple of nights, but it depends. Actually, at one point, I was thinking it might take one night, but then I read the warrant and I decided it might take two nights, just to read it. Now, motions normally track what's in the warrant, but I know that, I'm pretty sure that when we take up some of the zoning ones, for example, there's an article dealing with rezoning an overlay district that would affect the downtown and central business district, it runs, well, at one point, it was 26 pages. I think they've managed to make it a little bit smaller, smaller typeface or something. We're not going to read that entire article. The motion will be something along the lines of the motion to amend the zoning bylaw as set forth in the warrant, and that's sufficient. But it has to be set forth in the warrant, so you as the town meeting members know what it is we're going to be talking about. So, I don't know, if you got, didn't, there was some notice that they were going to try to get childcare for some of these meetings. Are we going to have childcare for town meetings?
I don't know if town meetings, these meetings, they would have childcare.
For the informational meetings?
For the informational meetings, really.
Yeah.
I don't think the town meeting sent anything used to it.
Yeah, the, the manager's office has been interested in offering childcare and, and with the recreation department helping, particularly for the informational sessions. We don't know, it was tried before for town meeting, then wasn't used, so if you're interested in that, let the town manager's office know so they can plan if you need childcare during, particularly those informational sessions. I know that can be important for most. Anything else? There's a lot of information we've tried to give you tonight, there's a lot more information that's going to be coming to you over the next few weeks. Take a look at this stuff, go to the information sessions if you can, come to town meeting with your, your homework done and an open mind. Another question?
So, there's minutes taken for the meeting, is there a journal of minutes that's put anywhere, that's supposed to be put out?
The, the annual town report, the clerk keeps track of the votes, but the annual town report has a sort of, it's in summary fashion if you read through. Sometimes I'll look at it, really, is that how we did it? But, I mean, the important thing is that we're keeping track of the votes and, and, you know, who made the motion, who seconded the motion, and what happened. There aren't minutes that give, go into any detail about, you know, so-and-so said this, and this was discussed, it's just too much to put that. You really want to know what happened, what we did on, you know, on a given night, it's on demand with the NOED Community Media, and I've sometimes gone back to look at that to kind of, how did we handle that, or what did we do? So, and, and get your friends and relatives to watch NOED Community Media, especially for your, you know, your maiden speech at town meeting. Work on those first speeches, you know? I sometimes tell people, "I welcome to town meeting," and I said to a couple of people I knew that I'd newly elected, "Great to have you there, and I'll call on you the first night, whether your hands raised or not, I'll call on you the first night." I won't really do that, but, and I will try to learn your names, and, but we appreciate, all of us who worked on this tonight, appreciate your coming out, and by my count, we had roughly 30 of the new, of the 38 new town meeting members. I think that's a great turnout, it's a great tribute to your interest in the town and your caring for how things work in this town, so hopefully you find town meeting membership a rewarding experience, and you'll get to help shape our future, because it's your future and the future of those who come after us, that's what we do. So, thanks for that. I want to thank Mary Lou and Alan and Tom and Paul for their presentations, the other officials who are here, and there's another question.
Sorry, Frank Adams, District 9. The two override information sessions made in May 19, are those the same present?
Yes, same presentation, just given twice in case someone couldn't make the other.
Nine, that was, seven.
Yeah, it's very hard to figure out behind.
Yeah, yes, directly behind, okay. Right, Sue. Sue Bartlett, who's our housemaster, are you doing it for town meeting too? She's in charge of getting all these slides up here, and we, the other thing, we tell people if they have slides when they're making a presentation, I don't know the name of you who will be doing that as, as freshman members of town meeting, but try to arrange it in advance through me, and, and I'll put you in touch with whoever it is, it's often Sue doing that, so we're not fumbling around with slides if we're trying to get town meeting underway. All right? Anything else? As I said, I'm available, you know, my email, moderator, at the main NOED address, noedma.gov. If there are questions, if you want to register to speak on a particular article, and we'll see you all 7:30 or earlier, please, on the 25th, right here. Thanks again. Thanks very much for all of you.